Packet.
Did you give your packet to the janitor? Did you say stop?
Oh, okay. Was you already grab yours, Julie?
She took hers off the other day.
Okay, so I swapped our tags and they happened to grab this chair.
That I need though.
This you need?
Yeah.
Oh, you swapped it, that's right.
I swapped our signs because I picked this chair and that was easier than moving to the other chair. Sorry for my laziness. We're not gonna have a big conflict about that. Okay. All right, I will start by making a motion to open the meeting. Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Woda? Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. I'm just browsing through the agenda here. Sorry to everyone in attendance that we started early. We need to get some consultation with our attorney. We have a number of matters we're reviewing. And I want to talk a little bit about what's going on tonight. We have a rehearing of some variances for Five State Street, for parking variance and for lot coverage. There is a pending application of an LWRP review for proposed short-term rental legislation. And we have a pile of minutes. So that's what's on our agenda tonight. I'm gonna start with a conflict of interest disclosure. Does anyone have any conflicts of interest to disclose?
I do not.
I do not.
No.
I do not.
I do not. Okay. So let's jump into the Five State Street application. The background on this is some variances were granted. Do you have the date, Mindy? I think they're approximately April of last year.
I do have the date. The variances are dated April 5th, 2023.
Okay, April 5th, 2023, they were granted. One was to allow zero parking spaces at Five State Street. Another one was to allow, I believe it was 95% lot coverage at Five State Street, which means the property can be 95% paved. So since that time, litigation ensued with the adjacent property owner that was concerned about these. And they raised some concern about not getting adequate notice to be able to give us public comments regarding these variances. So we are conducting these public hearings in part to correct that matter so that we can hear any concerns that neighbors or other members of the public would like to make regarding these variances. So with that said, I'll just go ahead and open the public hearing for both of these variances.
Second.
Or make a motion to open the public hearing for both of these variances.
I still, second.
I got you. Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Woda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak?
Hello, Steve. My name's Tucker Cooley. I am the village bakery in the business and store. Just for my clarification, that application has been withdrawn, right? That we're talking about?
I'm not here to answer questions right now. I'm here to listen to comments that you should have.
So on the minutes for the agenda that you posted, the packet that you posted, it was specified that Mr. Van Ceney officially looked through all applications, including these variance requests, both at the board of trustees meeting and then again emailed on April 27th, 2023. So I guess I just wanted to say that out loud.
Okay.
I'm confused as to why we're rehearing these, but it doesn't matter. I want to also note that there is a shared handicap parking space that is agreed between the two owners and the OD that this variance would get rid of. And it's something that the village bakery has always relied on, that shared parking space ever since when Starbucks was there. And then it was covered up during COVID when there wasn't parking anywhere. But it was something that was used quite often by our guests. This summer, that parking lot has been roped off with chains and posts and it's been very dangerous for our guests. There've been numerous accidents in our parking lot with people running into those posts damaging their cars. My fear is that getting rid of that parking lot will continue to make our parking lot more dangerous. And also, it's unclear to me where, without these parking spaces, you know, it's already very, very difficult for our guests and our employees to find parking during the day anywhere in the village. Losing parking spaces might not seem like a big deal, but six parking spaces adds up in the village. And I'm confused or not confused, but curious where the village is going to request I tell my employees and my guests to park in the future. Is the plan to have us park our employee cars on the residential streets that neighbor the village bakery? Because right now it is very challenging. And so that is, I guess, what I really wanted to bring up. It's been dangerous having that parking lot closed last summer. And I don't know where I should be encouraging my employees to park and my guests to park if we're gonna continue to remove parking spaces in the village. Okay?
Okay, thank you for your comments. Does anyone else like to make any comments?
My name's Dan Clifford. I own the building of Eight State Street. So I'm correct, this is not a forum to ask questions?
We're here to listen to your comments and concerns is what we're listening to do. So you can address your comments to the board. We're not here to answer your questions.
Okay, so it's my understanding that this variance has been passed to allow there's no more parking spots there. Is that correct? So in essence, you're taking more parking spaces away from the village in total?
They are not required to remove their parking spaces, if that's your question.
Yeah, they're really, it's not appropriate to ask questions. If you have public comments for them to consider, the board is here to hear your public comments, but not to have a question and answer session.
Okay, that's all right. So, okay. Can I ask a question about, you said 95% paved, is that the second portion of that variance? Is that what I heard so quick? Is that 95% paved, like you take a building down and pave it 95%? Neither, or the building in case of?
Again, it's not a time for questions and answers to the board members. The variances are members of public record. You can review them. If you have questions, you can detain counsel, but this board is not here to answer questions.
Yeah, the problem is we can't give, you know, legal interpretations, that sort of thing. We get ourselves into trouble if we try doing that because it really is a job for an attorney.
So I have a question that might not be able to answer.
Fair enough.
When this original public hearing should be completed, is that an opportunity to ask questions?
Nope.
Okay.
It's just a problem, it's just intended to be for public comment.
Okay.
So that the board can consider the public's concerns with each spectrum application.
Okay.
So if any of your interpretations bring up concerns, by all means, tell us what your concerns are.
Okay, so based on what I understand and what I'm hearing, I think it's definitely the village to take away, but allow spots that are already available to be taken away just because of pressure on other lots and parking and side streets and that nature. So if there's an abundance of parking and this, you know, as the situation went through the proper steps and said, well, if you want to, it's kind of a give and take, you know, that might be one situation. But in this situation, well, in the face of the day, I don't, I don't know that it's a great idea to allow somebody to give up their space, the six spaces that they have, you know, for their business because they would put pressure elsewhere. I mean, people have to go somewhere and there's less and less options. So I think that's not just about me as a business owner or property owner. I think that's for those visiting the village. Because I don't know, I know we talk about walkability, and I'm not sure where all those people should start with. Talking, you know, I live less than two miles away, and I don't walk up here, I can't shop and break into whatever I shop for at home. There needs to be a starting point. And I think more space to take away, but less likely there is to have any type of starting point to enjoy the village, so.
Okay, thank you.
Can I add just one more, sorry? I am just a little concerned having a neighboring parking lot. If the assumption is that these, if that business is going to assume that they're just gonna use our parking lot for their businesses.
Could you just reiterate who you are as the?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm the village bakery.
Thank you.
Yeah, our parking lot, you know, we have to reassemble the whole thing just because of the dumpster trucks and wear and tear on it. And if the assumption is that they, you know, we are gonna free up our parking to let others use it, it seems unfair to put that burden on us. And it's costly as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our meeting is also livestreamed. And anyone that is in the audience watching online, you are welcome to make comments. If anyone online wants to make a comment, click on the raise hand button. So open it up to anyone online.
No hands are raised. Oh, very much. Mike, you're able to speak.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
We can.
Great. Good evening, it's Mike Reynolds here, owner of the Five State Street property. You know, just want to comment that the variances that were approved and also went in front of a judge and were essentially shown to be fully within your rights to pass have been used by us for a new application. And so because these run with the property, they're still, they're still valid. And when you look at all the rationale the board utilized to pass it originally, it is all still valid and has, you know, nothing has really changed regarding that rationale. So, you know, I'm, as the property owner and as someone who, you know, is seeking to improve the property and improve the village and also, you know, adhere with the comprehensive plans that call for elimination of parking of this type to, you know, change the nature and the character of the village, that's exactly what we're trying to do. So just want to, you know, obviously express my support for the variances and appreciate the board rehearing it and so we can move forward with our plans. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions? Is there anyone else?
We don't have any more hands online.
Since Mr. Reynolds is the property owner, is there anyone with any questions for him? I don't have any questions at this time.
I do not.
I don't.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds, for your presenting, your current status, it's appreciated. As far as next steps with this, I'm a little overwhelmed with this because we've had, I don't know, what, 200 pages of documents dropped on us in the last 24 hours or so. I'm interested in taking some more time to consider these and to continue discussions in the future. So what was important to me is to hear what, grant a forum for public comments, listen to those comments. And then we're gonna methodically start moving through our process here and addressing everything that we've heard. So with that said, I'd like to keep the public hearing open and schedule a discussion for another meeting. What are people's interests? Do you want to schedule a special meeting? Or do you want to schedule it for our October meeting?
Well, I, you know, generally my thought is I like to keep things moving. I know delay can be costly for people. But in this case, I mean, we don't have any impending, you know, construction out to begin or anything unless I'm mistaken. Is there, is there a cause for urgency that it needs to be addressed within the next, you know, couple of weeks? Or is it something that can wait until the October meeting?
I guess that'd be a question for Mr. Reynolds.
He's muted.
Yeah.
Hi.
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. As you know, this has been a very long and protracted process and every day counts. And so I appreciate you've been flexible with me in the past to help with the prior application. And unfortunately, this is still tying up any progress at the site. So this needs to get resolved because it's been ongoing for almost a year and a half. And, you know, we'd like to move forward. So I'm not sure what documentation still needs to be reviewed since it's, you know, it's been, it's been ongoing. I don't think there's anything new that's come about. But if the board needs some time and does want to regroup on it, I would ask that it, you know, happen more quickly than the next meeting.
Just for the record, and this is not, you know, particularly responding to Mr. Reynolds, but just, you know, for anybody that may be wondering, we did receive yesterday evening an email from, I guess, the council representing the village bakery with a number of points and documents attached to the email that we, I think, need time to review and make sure that we understand what is being argued so that we can take it seriously and, you know, address it properly.
And I believe that Alexandria has posted all of those documents to the?
Only the email. I did not go through the attachments.
The attachments need to be uploaded.
Yeah, we need to make sure that's available to the public.
I understand only the email was, and I need to redact those attachments before I post them.
Well, the attachments are all public documents.
Yeah, they're filed with the court.
Okay.
In order to file them with the court, the council needs to certify that they, there's no protected personal information in there. So I think that they're.
Okay, okay. I'll take them in first.
Okay, so we should, and those can certainly appear in the packet for our next meeting as well.
Yes.
So, so let me take a look at the calendar here. I'm definitely not available next week. I could be available the week of the 18th, on Wednesday, the 18th. I could also be available, I think, I think not the 25th. For Wednesdays, for our next meeting. Our next meeting is October 2nd, is that right?
Yes.
So if I wanted to schedule something, my first of all, preferred date would be 18th, which is two weeks from today.
Yeah, I have a scheduling conflict on the 18th. I could ask, and my law partner also is a scheduler.
Okay. I could also be probably available any day that week. For most days, I'll be, I'm done. I guess, questions do we want to hear? Even schedule a meeting in two weeks' time? That's a question, that's also a question.
Well, I guess the first question, is that gonna give us some time to review and consider everything? I think it probably does, but if anybody's got concerns that it doesn't, we should probably talk about that.
What about, do the trustees have a meeting on the 17th?
The 24th of September.
So Tuesday, the 17th? Could people make that?
I could make that.
Oh, could you make that?
I can make it, yes.
Yeah, I can make 17th.
Yep, that's fine.
Yeah.
Sorry, what day?
Tuesdays.
17th.
Yeah, that works for me.
And what time would we like to schedule that for? I could still use more time, I think, to discuss things with our attorney over some of our next steps here. I would suggest maybe scheduling a training session at 6:00 and maybe the hearing at 7:00.
Yeah.
December, maybe at 7:00?
Yeah, good idea.
Okay. All right, so then I'll make a motion to keep the public hearing open and continue discussion of this on Tuesday, the 17th, at 7:00 PM. Second. I'll revise that to say September 17th.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Woda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair Bristow?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
We will continue discussion and if you, it's still open. If you wish to present more comments, you're able to do so.
Can we do so in the next meeting or any time in between?
If you want to send any comments you may have to our secretary in writing, if you can't attend, you're welcome to do that. And you're also welcome to attend our meeting and presenting additional comments you may have. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
The next thing is a discussion about a schedule for this short-term rental legislation. As some background, we received a letter from the Board of Trustees with a full environmental assessment form and a copy of the local law and a request for us to do a local waterfront consistency review on said law. So this came in about a week ago. And I have not fully gone through everything yet. Other people may have. But I guess discussion of next steps regarding that law. Mindy, I know step one is the seeker process needs to kick off, which I have not seen anything yet. So we can't make a waterfront consistency determination until a NEGDEC or PUS or EIS has been issued.
Or a NEGDEC or a finding statement at the conclusion of the environmental review process. So the earliest that you could make a determination on the LWRP consistency review would be after the trustees classify the action as type 1, type 2, or unlisted. They need to establish lead agency, make a determination of significance. In the event that they were to issue a NEGDEC, then you could make a determination under the LWRP after that. That would be the earliest. So a couple of things need to happen before you can act on this application.
Okay, thank you. Are there any trustees online?
One. Mayor Plummer.
I was wondering if she, if Mayor Plummer is online, is she able to address the status of this in seeker? And what's going on before the trustees?
Hi, Mayor Plummer here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
We have extended the moratorium through February 8th of 2025. And so I think everything that's in the memorandum is, you know, we just need to hand it off to you. So for your review, that's really where we are.
Well, we're not, we can't complete our review until seeker is complete. That's step one. As under the environmental laws, no agency can approve an application until we've addressed the environmental review.
Why don't we do this? Mindy, why don't we have our attorney, Jeff Turner, speak with you tomorrow?
Sure.
Okay, I think that'll, you know, clear things up.
Well, okay, Mayor, can you answer one question first of all? Did you, the trustees intend to be lead agency for the environmental review?
You know, I'm not sure the outcome of that, actually. I don't have that information. I think it was just a direct referral to you, to your board.
I'll speak with Jeff.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, speak with Jeff and clear it up. I don't have the, any additional information in front of me right now.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Okay, I'm muting. Thank you.
Thank you.
What else?
Okay, so I guess you'll find out tomorrow when you talk to Jeff. Okay, so I guess we're in limbo then with next steps on that. So the trustees' next meeting is?
Tuesday, the 10th, of September.
Tuesday, the 10th.
Then why don't you just go over to the October meeting?
Yeah, I think.
Other things need to happen here.
We got plenty to deal with what this other one is, is my thoughts. So, all right. So normally from when this came in, this came in with our normal application review schedule, it would have been scheduled for the October meeting. I know seeker takes 30 days, as does county planning referrals take 30 days. So we're ways away from being able to act on this. So I guess at this time, based on what I know, I'll just defer this to our October meeting and on October 2nd. We'll start discussion at that time.
If seeker and the designations that you brought up, Mindy, have not been determined in order to public notice in time, it still needs to be noticed for a public hearing on October? Or that isn't even noticed yet until?
Are you asking about the public hearing on the LWRP review for the short-term rental law?
Yes, yes.
Why don't we talk about that in two weeks?
Okay.
Because I'm not sure that the application can be deemed complete at this point.
Okay.
Is that enough time to schedule a public hearing? 15 days?
14 days.
14 days?
Yeah, I've been getting them out, yeah. 21 days, but it could be 14, it's fine, it's fine, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, I guess we can evaluate the status on the 17th. And right now, the plan is to have it on the agenda on October 2nd. Okay. Okay, so the next agenda item is, we have a bunch of minutes and resolutions. And I'm expecting this can take some time. So first one we had was the July 10th minutes. And I know these came out late. So people need some time to browse through these, by all means.
Alexandria, a question.
Yes.
I see that you've got like the solid line that differentiates the planning board determinations from the CBA determinations. Would it be possible to have language in the minutes to call out that, you know, for example, two quartile circle was a review made by the planning board? And then underneath? And then underneath the heavy, dark, straight line above the variances, as some of them, they're kind of, they were being reviewed together. So, I see. The setback variance was done by the ZBA, but the subdivision approval and the minor site plan approval were done by the planning board?
Oh, I see, that's confusing.
This was all in one application?
Right.
No, there's three applications.
Well, right. It was three applications. I may, you know, so I don't know what, how the board would prefer to handle it, but it may be appropriate to differentiate between the determinations that were made by the planning board and the determinations that were made by the ZBA.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, when I read through these, I found it helpful to get like a stronger separation from one application to another. So I think I stuck that solid line in here and revising it, but I didn't put one in over the next one for 50 State Street. I'm just kind of wondering if, I think it makes sense to have a, you know, a little separator between when we're talking of one application and another makes sense. I think it makes sense to say which board.
Do we need a line if I'm saying which board? We've never been aligned before, I guess.
Well, it doesn't even need to be a line, it just needs, I think.
Just some visual separation sometime.
I'm trying to think what Linda used to do. I think she used to put some like, I think she used to put them centered, like she would say, instead of a bullet for two courtney circle, I think she would center it and then put like.
You're saying a centered line?
No, you know, center it in the middle of the line.
Just in the middle. Subheading.
Yeah.
I think that what Alexandria's doing, she's using the red color to differentiate different applications.
Right, I like the red.
I like the red.
Yeah, that is a way to.
But I usually say the board, the board, the board.
Yeah, it's not a different case.
Yeah, I put the board as well, yeah.
Yeah.
Just a couple of non-substantive questions I have. Usually it's not an issue because it's just like a sentence or two, but I noticed in the comments, Charles Konar, we have a couple of sentences and then we say Konar highlighted. Should we say Mr. Konar instead of just giving the last name? I don't, I don't really have a strong feeling whether we go one or the other, but whatever we do, we should probably just be consistent. So we should probably just kind of be on the same page about, you know, how we're handling that. Should we?
My writing style is not to use pronouns, so if you guys want to see that in discipline or.
Just use his full name.
I'd use like a Konar or like the initial and then the last name and some like another board's initials, but how do you want to designate people?
Pronouns are very complicated these days.
Yeah.
It's true.
I would stay away from.
Just repeat his full name.
Right.
I mean, we do say his comments, so.
I meant like just your business.
Yeah.
I usually try to say they, so if there's any.
Yeah.
Or not, why?
Or maybe there's a way to just avoid, just reword it to avoid.
I mean, you could use they, their.
Or the resident, I usually say the resident or the speaker.
I like the resident or the speaker, yeah, that's good.
Do.
Assuming he is a resident and not a business owner.
Yeah.
True, yeah.
The, are these edits for these particular minutes or is this a lady's open forum?
Like a global change?
Yeah, more of a, I just, I just, as I read through it, it made me wonder, because there are several Konars in the village, so if we say, if we say Konar highlighted, I'm like, okay, in context, we can see that means Charles Konar. But should we say Mr. Konar? Should we just say Konar? Should we say something else?
Like I said, another reason I've been like, the first initial and then the last name is that is different, so maybe there's others see Konar, I don't know.
You could just say he.
I'm fine with they.
Said his in the sentence before, you could just.
There's other edits to my minute, so I probably didn't say that, didn't say that. It was rewritten.
Oh, did I modify that possibly?
I think so.
I might have. Okay, so here, so I make some wording changes sometimes and maybe that's one that.
I stay away from it because of whatever reasons, you know, some, people.
Fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Of people's reference. But if we want to stick to something universal, this.
Yeah, we want to be respectful.
Yeah.
Right, so getting back to the fire district application, my understanding is that when Mr. Cook moved to open the public hearing, he was doing it both on behalf of the planning board and the ZBA. So, you know, if we're going to be meticulous about who's acting when, it would be important to note that the public hearing was opened by both boards for one public hearing.
Or we could just say the motion to, to open all public hearings, or all three.
It still doesn't, it doesn't solve the problem of who.
Which board is being?
Who is acting.
Right, exactly.
I would like to start doing it this way because it actually keeps the public informed which applications are in front of the board too when they're reviewing. And I know in the past, I've seen them separated on even agendas and then it kind of went away. So if the minutes are reflecting which board the application was in front of, I think that's.
Well, and if there's ever a question about whether a public hearing was opened and by whom and for what purpose, you know, we can resolve that. You know, I would have a problem with both boards deciding to have one public hearing for three applications that have a lot of overlap, like we had the fire district application.
Right.
You know, I think that makes a lot of sense rather than open three separate public hearings and hear the same comments over and over.
Right, yeah. Yeah, that's not efficient to do it that way.
Right. But, so, you know, I don't have, I think that it's good, it would just be good practice to identify which board is acting.
Yeah, yeah, just say, member Cook moved for the planning board to open the public hearing, or for the planning board and the zoning board to open the public hearing.
Okay, so should we amend it to say, to open the public hearing for the planning board and the zoning board of appeals?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll just do that.
I don't need to be too meticulous and pedantic about it, but I, I think it's not that we're opening a hearing for the board, it's that the board is open.
You're right.
Right.
You're absolutely right.
So, yeah, I think it would be member Cook moved for the X board to open a public hearing on.
Couldn't you just, couldn't you just say motion by member Cook and seconded by member Hoppin for the PZBA, or excuse me, for the planning and then DBA to open the public hearing? Okay.
There's all kinds of ways when you do it.
Yeah.
Just, I think it's more important that we.
Are consistent.
We're consistent when we articulate who's acting.
Right.
Because I think one of the reasons why people get confused, you know, and think the PZBA is one board is because, you know, if we have minutes that are treated like one board and they're thinking, well, this, this is one entity, not two separate boards who are, consist of the same members who are hearing applications at the same time.
Okay, well, it sounds like you've got some direction for edits here. And all our decisions are clearly state which board it's from, which is good.
The other very non-substantive comment I had is under the 50 State Street information only, you know, where we say the dumpster will be moved to the other end in describing his proposal, maybe it would be better to say he proposes to move the dumpster or something like that, just to more clearly reflect that this is, you know, a proposal or even a hypothetical proposal as opposed to something that will happen.
So instead of will, you can say is proposed to.
Yeah, is proposed to be moved or, you know, like proposed to, whatever.
Something I was wondering is if we want the thing about workshop minutes, if we even want that in here?
I want it. Yeah, because that actually is a little different than what like the clerks in Monroe County say about workshops, that every meeting should have minutes to it. So whether you guys are approving them or not, I still have to create the minutes for our meeting that you guys are.
Okay.
Yeah. So if we're deciding not to approve them, this is something I spoke about with DORFIA.
Maybe we need to have more discussions about what to do with these.
With the workshop minutes?
Yeah, we used to merge them with our other minutes, they just didn't say much.
I don't know.
You wouldn't know.
It's, yeah, if we're deciding not to approve a set of minutes is why I wanted to that was a board decision not to do.
Right, right. Would they be posted?
For the workshop?
Yeah.
No, they're just documented, they're a set of minutes. Yeah, because this board also decided not to post any minutes that hadn't been approved.
Right. Right.
So what you said.
I mean, it's subject to foil if somebody wanted to.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, it's a foil off the record. And, and I'm, can I just add one more comment on the July 10th, 2024 minutes? I don't think there's any reason to include a statement that I told the board members that they can't prejudge applications.
Yeah, that's right, we need to pick that out.
I understand.
I will remove it. And that one was tricky too, because it's information only, you know?
Yeah, exactly.
It's always like, how much description are you putting in there as well?
Yeah, that's always tricky.
Yeah.
And.
I see. The context is important.
Yeah.
But sometimes people want to know, why are we not saying anything if they're coming in for information only?
Yeah.
Because we're listening.
So it's kind of similar to the.
Yeah.
The. Okay.
Can you look at the red, no, at the bottom, at the last meeting, you were kind of brainstorming to be more descriptive at the end. Does that sound funny? Is it too descriptive of like what information is available on the website?
I mean, I, I think that's a decent general description. I would think about just putting it in the footer for almost, so it's on every page, because someone may not read to the end, they might just read you the first application in question.
That's a very good point.
I like that.
And I think it's important to note that, yes, not everything is in here, but there, there's the online recording and there's more information at the office.
Do we need to put with full public comments speakers? Can we just say the full video recording of the meeting, the meeting packet, supplementary materials are available on the Village website?
It got a little wordy. That, that came from feedback where sometimes people that are giving a public comment are like, why did you condense it to one sentence when I made this huge public comment? So if they know that the video recording includes a public comment, we could say that or just say the recording. Yeah, I, the public comments are here, so if someone wants to know, they can reach out. Yeah.
So maybe you just say the video recording with full public comments, instead of public comments speakers, just full public comments made.
Instead of full complete?
But, so the video recording doesn't include the written public comments?
Oh, good point, good point. Maybe we should just say the video.
There is a video recording.
The whole video recording of the meeting.
Right, is available.
Is it as broad as it covers all?
Yeah, and there's, that's the, and further information is available at the office, which would be email comments.
Yeah, I guess.
On the hotline.
Right.
So this might be extra, make it even wordier.
You have the red teacher pen.
I try and, I try and view this through the lens of like if my mother was trying to look at this. And I know she would have an issue with trying to like, what is the Village website? Or like, where is the Village located? Like, what's the address? Is there any way to like, put that in there?
I don't know, because if they are looking at these minutes, they've gotten to the Village website, so I don't know.
Well, maybe you can just say something, for more information, please see the video recording, meeting packet, and supplemental materials posted at.
Kind of like anyone would be noticed, yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's true.
Yeah.
Can we just say something like, these minutes are only a summary, the full recording is available as well as the.
I've never seen that on a meeting minutes, but we could start a trend.
So.
Or should we?
I'll try again in the next month of minutes, okay? We have another set of minutes to approve, but I have your feedback, so we'll play with that sense.
Yeah, I think you get the gist, we all get the gist.
Yeah.
You tweaking a little bit, okay.
So are we looking at the 24th now?
Well, are we good with these, with the discussed changes?
When did we land?
For the 10th? Yeah, I landed with doing nothing with it is where I landed. And under some debates as to why there is he in other sentences, but I kind of get the point of, of pronouns. And honestly, I hadn't thought of that, because it's just normally it's he or she or, but times are changing.
I mean, the easiest way to do it would be to use that, because that, doesn't that cover a business as well?
As much as I despise that.
I know, I know, I hope this will.
Because that covers any and all.
I think it's.
Persons as well as businesses.
It's confused, it's.
Although, this is the most public comment we've had in a long time, so if you guys want me to edit these, then you can look at them again, because it's a little time consuming stuff. Like, that's if you want to change some of those. You can come back to seven, 10 minutes?
We could. I also would agree that these aren't very substantive and this is.
Okay.
It's not worth me making a big deal out of it.
I, I don't, I don't want to spend too much energy on this. I do think it's good to have a, you know, just have a general, general understanding of how we're going.
So where, so where are we landing?
I don't want to overthink it either.
Are you, what about just the initial, like C?
Fine.
Okay.
I'm fine, I get it, yeah. So then you would change all the he to C Konar?
Sure.
Is that how you, is that your typical style? I find that very tedious to read, but that's okay.
I don't know, I feel like I've done these minutes a long time ago now, so. Approve with amendments however you guys want, knowing that this is what we talked about.
Well, I'm less concerned of how these end up than what we do in the future, I guess.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah.
Okay. So are we approving these or are we waiting for another revision? My vote would be to just approve on what the amendments discussed.
Yes.
And then however they end up with, as a result of her tweaking these, I'm fine with.
Right.
Yep, I agree.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve these with the changes discussed.
Second.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, then we, we have the next one. We have the decision for this. What do we want to go to next, I guess is the question. Do you want to go to the July 24th minutes or do you want to get to some of these resolutions?
Minutes?
Okay.
Is, is there a kind of a standard tense that's used? Like is things, are things in the present or in the past?
As long as it's consistent unless it doesn't matter.
So can we just choose one, a tense?
I usually choose by that.
Right, but so.
Well, like on the first page, it says, chairperson, Claire Stroud stated, and then the bottom it says, Chair of the Last Commissioner reads exhibit.
Right, just use it all present then?
Okay.
Yeah. I'm fine with that.
It has to be the past tense, but that's fine.
I think my preference probably would be for the past, it's, I mean, is there supposed to be a recording of something that happened, but I don't feel strongly about it.
Yeah, I'm with you, that's my preference, but, okay.
As long as it's consistent.
Yeah, I just, yeah, pick one.
One very minor thing, I don't, I don't really care if you use my name, but I know it has my, my full name on the last vote there instead of member, and it looks like we have member everywhere else, so, yeah, just consistent, I don't care which one.
Yep.
It'll be harder.
All right.
The first, okay, in the middle of page two, there's two sentences need to be swapped. I think we asked for public, it shows here with the, the motion I made, to close the public hearing before asking for public comments. So those two sentences need to be swapped.
Okay.
So we asked for comments, then when they received none, then they closed the public hearing. Okay. Very good. So just a couple minor, just that one minor change, to swap sentences around, and maybe update tense. Yeah, okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of July 24th with the amendments discussed.
Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair of the Listra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Here, it's not my scribbles, by the way, it's not my scribbles.
Thank you.
What a great delivery.
Okay, yeah, we have the two coordinate circles, one, so this is the 2024-10, I think that's what we're looking at now?
Yes.
I have this one spying.
So, I only have one question. Where we define the board at the top? Says the planning board of the Village of Pittsburgh, and then in the, effectively we say whereas, the Village of Pittsburgh Planning Board, and gets defined again, is that normal?
I have no idea, but probably only needs to happen once.
And I don't know which one it should be.
Where's, where's?
The first one?
Yeah, just the first one should define the board. You don't need to.
Redefine it?
Redefine it.
Okay, and is it?
So the first whereas can just say the board receives and reviewed and evaluation? Because it's already a defined term.
I didn't know if some of these things in findings, like three and four over there, I didn't know what people thought of wording on those, whether we should have those in there at all, or what? But the definition of garage and the fact that they're absentee made it effectively not a garage.
Yeah, no, I thought that was really good, actually, because if you have, you know, this is going to be precedent for future applications, and if you were to grant an application that was somehow similar, and not, you know, call out the fact that this is really being denied, because you can't have an accessory structural with this for primary use, I thought that was really good.
Okay.
I, I think you should change it, but the, I didn't understand the second sentence of paragraph four. Is there a word missing?
There may be, you can reword that. That was a comment from Katie, Lauren, she says, look, you can call it a storage building, or you can call it a garage. It's effectively a garage because it's used to store cars. However, that can be conveyed.
Maybe we just say the proposal is by all practical considerations, a proposal for two garages. Or maybe we just say, this storage building is for all practical purposes, a second garage.
Do you prefer that?
Well, there are two different ideas, right? So the first one, I understand the house is vacant, so the storage building will not be used by an occupant of the building. Maybe you can say moreover, the proposal is essentially, or the application essentially seeks approval for two garages.
Yeah, because however makes it seem like you're not working in concert with primary state.
Right, 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 yeah, yeah.
It's kind of just a wrong word.
So I would say moreover, the proposal, or the application essentially seeks approval for two garages.
So instead of however, you say moreover?
And then, I mean, personally, I would just strike the by all practical considerations in future use by a new blah, 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 blah. I would say the proposal is essentially, the, the application essentially seeks approval for two garages.
Yeah, yeah.
And then the only other comment I have is at the very top of the first page, project, the colon and the space are missing between project and two coordinate circle.
Oh, that two needs to be. Colon.
And then, are we on 2024-11?
Well, are we going to adopt this with the changes discussed? Are we ready for that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-10 with the changes discussed.
A second.
Member Wilks?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Chair of the Listra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, number 11.
At the bottom of the first page, it's just agreement, so it's either the alterations involve, or the alteration involves.
The alteration that involve, you say, take the S off involve? Yeah.
Yeah.
One or the other, yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that sounds good to me, take the S off involve. And back to that, in the minutes, we just had a general discussion of, we declared a type two, and then this is the specifics of why are in the resolution.
So just a general question, when we write type two, should it be with Roman numerals?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, good point.
Should be capital T?
Capital T.
Capital T, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so type two goes to Roman numerals and capital T. I do not like those personally. Is that the proper way of doing it?
Well, okay, I don't like C R R dash N Y.
Yeah.
In my world, it's N Y C R R.
I would do the same, that's how we always do it, yeah.
Okay, we can change all the templates. I don't even know where that came from.
I would prefer that.
I would prefer that, it's just, it's like chalk on a blackboard.
Yeah.
Quite frankly. And the other, and then, move back since I'm talking, underneath the action box, at a meeting of the zoning board of appeals, not the planning board.
Yeah.
So we need to fix that.
Oh, okay.
Later it says, before the Z D A, first rule.
So the first paragraph does say zoning board?
Yes.
That's important.
Yep.
Thank you.
I'm a little worried that that may still be there in some of our other resolutions, because these templates just get filled in, we'll have to check them.
The templates should be correct, but sometimes things get around. I know, I remember there was one I looked at, and I fixed a few of them in there, but that must not have caught. Andy, did you have a comment?
No, I, my, yes, my comment was, I think this board is really good at proofreading this, so I'd be very surprised if things fall into the cracks.
In, after the whereas clause, A, the roof experience will not create, I wondered if, where it says, where we say will not create any demand for governmental services, should we say will not create any additional demand or any new demand, instead of just saying any demand?
Oh, where, where?
So is this under paragraph A, under the whereas clause?
Okay.
First sentence.
Oh, will not create any demand, oh.
Yeah, this was, their comments, I think, were made uncopied from what they submitted to us, so we can. So you want to say, will not create any new demand for governmental services?
Yeah, I don't care whether it's new demand or additional demand, but I feel like we should put one or another, as opposed to saying that it won't create any demand, because.
You could even strike it, for all care.
It's supposed to be, I think, just say new, yeah, new demand, any new demand.
Okay.
Under the minimum necessary to provide relief, my notes are that Jared commented that they need room for the vehicles to maneuver, so the parking lot can function. And I thought that wasn't an issue.
Okay.
Unless the board thinks otherwise.
Yeah, and no problem putting that in the findings.
So, can you, okay, now that I found where you're at, you're at F.
Correct.
On the last page there, so what do you suggest it reads?
I would add, I would propose another sentence, that the proposed lot, the variance is required so that fire vehicles can maneuver through the parking lot. Because he spoke quite a bit about the size of the vehicles and the turning radius, and, you know, how they wouldn't be able to get into the the garage.
Yeah.
Okay, did that sound good to everybody?
Yep. And, I don't know if this study was important, but I was also struck by the idea that the variance request was merely trying to preserve the status quo. variance request was merely trying to preserve the status quo, they weren't really, they weren't going to make any physical changes with respect to the area variance.
You think we should put that under the physical characteristics of the property?
Yes, if that's okay with you guys.
Yep.
So, your comment is, the physical property is maintaining its status quo, or how?
Or the variance seeks to preserve the status quo.
Okay. Well, right now, they seek to preserve the status quo, we don't know what's happening in the future.
Right.
Right.
Do we need to change where it says this project as if it's a defined term? I know you took this verbatim from it, but?
Project is defined on top.
Is it?
Yeah, under the resolution number?
So not all of these are veratims, we changed some of their things, but I think A and B were taken from theirs, C, we disagreed with theirs, and I think E, we disagreed with their comments a little bit, and D, I think, took their comments. So A, B, and D were their comments, others had modifications. Are we good with this, with the changes? We're on the 11 still, the area variance.
Good to me.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the language in resolution 2024-11 with the changes discussed.
Second.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Number Wols?
Aye.
Number Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Terrebaixka?
Aye.
So 12 is Z B A, right?
For, yes.
No, 12 is the planning board, it's a subdivision application.
Well, then, at the bottom.
Bullet.
The first bullet says Z B A.
Okay.
You know what, that's the same error that shows up in 11.
Yeah.
So the Z B A should be replaced with planning board.
Well, wait, for.
For a second.
For 11, it's.
11, it is the Z B A.
It is Z B A.
Yeah, but the seeker findings are for both the Z B A and planning board determinations, and the action is the work on the fire station updates and the, it's just my longer language saying that the planning board is minor subdivision, not the Z B A.
Yeah, so all of these, that the findings for the seeker should be identical in all three resolutions, and all three resolutions should have the first bullet stating planning board.
Yep.
Okeydoke.
And all of them should say N Y C R R instead of C R R N Y.
Thank you.
I looked at our other one, and it says N Y C R R, so, I don't know. The one for. Courtney Circle one. Don't know where that came from.
And then, type two with the Roman numeral.
Yeah, all of them need to be made into capital T. And two.
I think they were taking the ATM down today.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought it was gone today. I mean, it was left today.
Both days. Very strange noises over there.
On the second page, at the top, under three, where it says the proposed action does not, should that be at number four?
That should be at number four. So, Mindy, if you have comments on findings for this?
I do.
Speak up, because I think we're kind of, kind of had a few comments, and your notes where this is different than the standard, it's not a normal subdivision review, it's more of a lot line adjustment.
Right.
So any suggestions you have for findings, by all means?
I think you captured all that stuff for the seeker?
No, in the findings over there, why are we approving it?
Where are you?
So, I'm in, at the resolution 12, the second page. Whereas after review, the planning board has weighed the effect, yada, yada, so one, two, three, four, and five, under that.
Yeah, there's a P in the word code under 1A. That needs to come out. And I giggled when I read three. Because it says that lot, the lot configuration converts the ATM canopy, the parking spaces.
Makes sense, maybe it's voting.
Really?
Can we, any rewording suggestions?
We can say the converts the area under the.
Right, right, right.
Or like the.
ATM structure.
Right.
Removes the structure to allow it to be used as parking. Not just the roof.
Just the ATM.
So remove, so, okay, remove ATM canopy.
Just remove canopy.
That'll do it.
Okay.
The only other note that I had on the subdivision discussion was that the standards of village code 178.7 are not applicable because there's no development, but sitting here right now, I don't remember what 178.7 says.
Yeah, there is a comment two there, the lot line changes do not create any new buildable lots, I know that was a key part of our discussion.
Right, but that's 2A, not 178.7. And that had to do with seeker issue. Can I just put a quick look at the village code since we're sort of?
There is no.
I don't get.
I don't think there is a code book. Oh, you're okay on our computer?
I mean, do you mind if I put a law number in there?
Do you have a code book? I didn't know they existed.
Something gone digital. Yeah.
Is there a way we can get these minutes?
Maybe wait in your office.
I don't have one. I was looking up online, which is 80.
We can, we can talk about the minutes, please, you're, in a moment.
Okay, so village code 178-7 contains the general standards for subdivision approvals. And my comment was that the general standards are not applicable because there's not, it's a, it's a, no improvement to be proposed.
Oh, you want to add a finding six?
Yes. Well, don't we say this?
They said that in two. If you could just add the 178 to that.
You can say one.
Where, right.
Two.
Two.
Number two.
Lot line changes. Oh, okay, that's fine, you're right.
You can say four, this, read.
No construction is proposed.
Right. So you.
Do you want to add a, like a citation of that?
Maybe just one more sentence, village code 178.7 requirements do not imply. Therefore? We put therefore before the, yeah.
I'm good with these now.
Yeah, so, okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the language of resolution 2024-12 with the changes discussed.
A second.
Member Wols?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Terrebaixka?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, and then we have the last one, which is marked as 14, should that be 13?
No, the resolution to rehear.
Yes.
Was number 13.
Okay.
I thought you'd be suspicious.
Oh, I think I have the leverage to do that. It was.
Did you change that number?
Yeah. I got tricked when we added that two courtney one.
They ultimately need to make sense, but we could change the numbering scheme. We could change it to like, people's names.
Initials?
Yeah, 2024, George or Penelope.
Just checked it all.
Yeah, I'm kind of thinking of like hurricanes.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay, never mind, that's silly.
I like the.
So the seeker language is going to be updated to what we've discussed for the other ones. It's the first change for this one, I think.
What I think in the first, whereas, we can do the, the board received.
Yep.
So they didn't just remove the canopy, unless that refers, is that what that structure is called?
They're, they're, it's almost like they're calling that entire structure, the ATM canopy.
They did describe it that way in their application, yes.
But it's a whole. It's a, it's an ATM area that happens to also have a canopy.
How can the adequacy and arrangement of vehicular traffic and circulation be both improved and unchanged?
Oh, good point.
I will say, we went through this like extremely quick.
Yeah.
I would have agree, I went through this very quickly.
Yeah, well, I mean, we.
It's unchanged.
Seems like.
Yeah. I think we should skip without change.
Probably find some sentences on the recording where those, that was some multiple times. So, thank you for clarifying, okay.
Number seven is the same.
Well, off street parking, they added parking spots.
Oh, seven.
Oh, number seven, okay.
I mean.
Landscaping screaming is unchanging, it's unchanged, there is no.
I thought they were adding, I could be totally wrong, I thought that in the middle area, they were adding some sort of planting?
I don't think they added any planting, I think they just added parking.
Oh, no, no, it's a walkway, never mind, okay, unchanged, unchanged.
I think they took that walkway out.
Did they? Well, definitely.
Nice if they put a tree in there somewhere.
Would be nice. Okay, adequacy of lighting, I don't even understand the sentence here, the remaining flats and four underside lights?
The remaining what?
Flats.
Flats, flats?
Yeah.
So you have nine A.
Nine A.
Maybe it's supposed to be the pot lights?
Remaining lights?
The pocket lights, because there were flat pot lights in there.
In the, in the ATM area, yes, so remember. In the, in the ATM area, yes, so remember when they said that, and weren't they like not operational?
Yeah, or they, yeah, they started turning them off because people were driving up.
Yeah. All the drivers, yeah. Yeah. So they turned them off, but they're still there.
So I know they removed all the ones on the canopy, but some of the ones on the ground may remain and may be non-operational. Maybe we could just get rid of that second sentence?
Yeah, because if, if they're not being used right now anyways, it's unchanged.
Right.
Yeah.
How it goes.
I think they're going to be revisiting lighting in the future anyway, so most likely when they go to doing their big design.
So under 10, is the adequacy of drainage and stormwater systems unchanged or NA?
I think unchanged is good. Sometimes when we've had these, we've, we've specifically stated that we're only looking at, say, the ATM removal, and we're not approving drainage, lighting, landscaping, any of that, which I kind of think makes sense for a lot of these things, because we didn't, we chose not to dig into them, it's not that we're authorizing it to stay.
Right.
If like this, if it wasn't, if it wasn't previously approved, I don't know what was approved and what wasn't.
Right. And 11 sewers ER.
Did you say sewer?
Sewer, oh, okay.
So should we add a, a condition 2 stating to the effect of the planning board only reviewed the ATM removal and replacement with parking spaces?
Where are you?
The.
At the end.
At the very end.
It's not really a condition.
Is that a whereas paragraph? That we should, that, so that was a discussion we had where all we looked at was what was changed and we are not approving, necessarily approving, lighting, drainage, landscaping, any of that type of stuff, where do you suggest we?
I would put that actually in the fir, if you wanted to do that, put it in the first whereas. You received a review application to reconfigure the parking lot by removing an ATM canopy and converting the area to parking spaces, I mean.
And would you remove the word canopy from that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Alex.
And so should we add to that paragraph or add whereas immediately after that, a second one stating that to, something to the effect of drainage, landscaping, lighting are generally remaining unchanged and are not specifically approved by this? I'm just trying to figure out how to say that.
Why would we say unchanged?
Yes.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Right.
I think that's why we said unchanged under the whereas is for those.
As opposed to NA.
Okay, so just as a theoretical, because I don't know, let's say they just, someone just constructed something there and then drew it on the site plan, it should have been to a prior site plan approval, but never was because someone just constructed it. We don't know the history of any of this stuff, so are we making that legal, even though it was never reviewed? So I.
What are we approving?
That's such a hypothetical.
I know it's a hypothetical, but I mean, I have no idea how the site got to the way it is, what was, what was approved and what was illegally constructed.
I mean, that would be, you'd have, that's the whole village.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you'd have to.
I think that's something that would just be argued, you know, they try to make the argument, well, you approved the site plan, so it's fine.
Well, let's, let's roll back and theoretically, if somebody's going to seek to, for new site plan approval, they're required to bring the property into compliance, and that's a code enforcement issue. We came, we had that issue come up, I think, with North Hampton?
Well, nobody brings a property up into compliance with code completely, so usually if it's pre-existing non-conforming, they're allowed to leave it, but the question is, always is, what is actually pre-existing non-conforming and what is non-conforming?
Right, but it's not for this board.
It's not as a matter of, yeah.
There's no way you know that.
Yeah, that's.
Exactly.
You can't do that.
It is, it is presumed that they would do that.
What should happen in a perfect world is that at the time an application for site plan approval is made, if there are deviations between the existing condition and what the code requires or should require, or what was previously approved, then that should be a code enforcement issue, not, not a site plan approval issue. We, we stumbled upon that, we got caught up in that, was it North Hampton, North something?
50 State Street?
Yeah, was it 50 State Street?
See, that was one where we asked them to bring their lighting up to code, Northfield Commons.
Northfield Commons, right.
Yeah.
Right, but that, and that, that came up because the code enforcement officer said this is dangerous, it's not, you know, if you're going to make these changes to the parking lot, you need to bring the parking lot lighting up to code.
Right.
And here, they're not making any changes to the parking lot.
So I don't think you're memorializing anything.
No, I, I, I think that we kind of are by granting this, the approval, the site plan, because there's, you know, there's going to be a site plan that's going to be signed off on.
Right.
But you can't make a determination.
Right, I know, we, we have no idea of the history, we can't go digging into that, I get that, so my thought is, what's before us is just this ATM change, so we state that's all we're approving and not approving necessarily the landscaping, lighting, whatever.
Are you going to do that with every single application?
Yeah.
For you for a site plan approval?
We've done that with several, but I mean, there's kind of a distinction when we're actually looking at, trying to make it simple for a simple request, we can say we're approving just this request versus if someone's doing new development and they have a big plan, we're like, we're approving the entire plan. So, I mean, so we can either say the entire plan is thus authorized, or just the one change they want to make, so they have to apply to us not to necessarily bring their entire site into compliance, something triggers the review, and we can look at just that, is what I'm saying, and we can state we're approving just that, is, is the other thing of what I'm saying.
But it does say that.
I feel like the first, yeah, the first whereas.
The first whereas takes care of that, okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, maybe I'm digging into it.
No, 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 it's, it's, it's a really good question, and I think the, the answer is we, we just don't live in a perfect world, and the, the way, the way that it's come up in the past has been when there have been code enforcement actions taken against properties that were changed without undergoing site plan approval, that resulted in dangerous conditions on the property, the property owners were issued notices of violation, and the way that they cured the violation was to go through and undergo site plan review in order to bring it up to code, and, but that's a different situation from here where you probably have a pre-existing non-conformal use, we don't know, I mean.
But there's, so you need a trigger, and, and the trigger would be a code violation.
Right.
Not, and by the way, we're, we're not looking at anything else.
Yeah.
Okay, I mean, one of the things that's always bothered me is not, I would like to see properties gradually brought up to code, like for example, parking lots, can we get a few more trees in there, can we get lighting that's the appropriate brightness and so on, and, you know, I'm not sure how to get there, sometimes we can ask people if they're willing to make some changes and it's purely voluntary, other than what you're saying, they need code enforcement officer can bring it, but, you know, the, the things where public is accessing it and getting some minor improvements to improve safety, I just like to see what we can do to nudge things in that direction. This was not the time for this, this project to do any of that type of stuff.
Right.
Well, I mean, it has to the code enforcement officer.
Right, yeah, exactly.
To do the.
Nothing late, that's not a discussion for now.
Yeah.
It's an interesting thought came to them.
And that was, the 50 State Street was one where I thought we really made a big difference by bringing their lighting up to code, and we had some public comments that there were, people were scared to walk in the parking lot because there is prominent dark spots and they were, they felt unsafe.
Right, and that's something Steve brought up.
And, well, that's Steve, the building inspector at the time, and there's a lot of underlit parking lots like that in the building.
Wasn't it Steve?
No, that was, it was like eight years ago.
Yeah.
It was John Lindbeck, I think.
No. There was someone who was in between for a short period of time.
There are a couple of them.
There's been a few.
Right.
Right.
Might have been Floyd.
But we digress.
We digress. Anyway, are we, are we done with this?
Yes.
Yep, all right, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution, the language in the resolution 2024-14 with the changes discussed. Second.
Member Will?
Aye.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Ruestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.
All right, I'm, I'm weary and tired, but I was hoping for what Susan was suggesting to kind of talk about what we are doing with minutes procedures. What used to happen is she would draft minutes, usually send them out to Katie and I, I would make some changes, do some rewording and add content, and then Katie would usually go through and do final touch-ups on grammar wording and other stuff, and I thought that was working very well. Katie was a very good writer, and people were noticing a number of grammar changes and so on, so I wanted to see what people's thoughts are, did someone want to volunteer to go through and do some grammar edits and second round of edits?
I'll do it.
You're one, okay. That sound reasonable?
If you want to share the burden, I'm happy to chip in from time to time, but if you want to kind of take it and just.
If you want to, if one, if you want to swap out, that's fine.
Yeah, whatever, you want to do it, Susan.
I'll take a turn.
Yeah, okay, I think we'll, you need any help, anyone will.
I just send it, just send it to two people, maybe on a rotating basis.
Yeah.
I didn't, I didn't know that having like a full week and a weekend before review was working out really pretty good, so if not two weekends, so that everyone has a chance to review them, yeah.
The, this ones were tedious to review, there's a lot of stuff to go through, so it took much longer than normal.
For example, the next seven minutes would be the August meeting, and like Susan, you chair that meeting, and so maybe I'll send them to you too.
Sounds good.
Yeah, Justin wasn't even at that meeting, maybe I'll have this meeting maybe a little.
Yeah, I definitely shouldn't be part of any of that.
Yeah.
So, are we done? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Member Loda?
Aye.
Member Shannon?
Aye.
Member Will?
Aye.
Member Cook?
Aye.
Chair Ruestra?
Aye.
Motion passes.